I call the planning commission meeting to order for Thursday, June 9th, 2016. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Chappell. Not here. Commissioner Coffin. Not here. Commissioner French.
Here.
And Commissioner Ogden.
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Mosley on item two on public comments. Do you want to wait until we address an issue?
That works.
Okay. We'll skip item two. Anybody that would like to make a public comment, if you're signed in over there, we'll need you to come to the podium when we get to that point, okay? Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes for May 12th, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
I move that they approve the minutes for May 12th.
Motion's been made and seconded.
All right. Motion made and seconded to approve minutes from May 12th, 2016. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you.
Item four, approval of minutes for May 23rd, 2016.
Move that they be approved.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion to approve minutes from May 23rd, 2016 workshop. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Item five, discussion and possible action on application 2016-20113692 concerning request for special use permit to allow construction of a multifamily development on property located at 301 West Harrison Avenue.
Okay. And Chairman, we had two names sign up. I'm just going to ask Ms. Lynn Billido if they would like to speak on this item.
I would.
Okay. Please join us at the podium. The Billidos are familiar to the Historic Preservation Group, and so they are right next door to this, to this address that's applying for the special use.
The name again, Staff, please.
Billido, B as in boy, I, I'm used to spelling it. First name's Lynn, L-Y-A-N, just like a girl's name. And I do have handout for each of the commissioners if I could approach.
Yeah, if you'd like to.
And I'm going to refer to these, it's going to be a couple of minutes in, but I'll refer to these two documents.
Thank you.
I've got a set for you.
Mr. Mosley?
Well, yeah. I'm one set short. Must I give somebody?
They're the ones who are about one set, it's okay.
Here, one of these.
Oh, yep.
Cody mentioned that we live right next door to the Publishing Museum. We're just south of it, and the building says LJ Sadlerie. I didn't paint the LJ Sadlerie, that happens to be my initials, so it worked out very well for us. It's not why we bought the building, but like I said, it worked out well. We're admittedly new to the Guthrie area. We love living in Guthrie. We own three lots, actually five lots. We just bought two more lots in downtown Guthrie and have a contract for another one. I love the history of Guthrie. I like, I like, I love living in Guthrie. I like being in downtown Guthrie. As far as turning the Publishing Museum into 34 affordable senior housing units, it's all wrong for that building, it's all wrong for that location. The biggest problem that I see is number one, parking. We're talking about putting 34 single-bedroom affordable senior housing units in one building that has 13 parking spaces in its parking lot. The two documents that I gave you, one of them is a letter dated May 23rd, 2014 to Charles Lamb, the mayor of Edmund. The same group that is involved in this, Bywater, and I don't have any animosity toward anybody at Bywater, this isn't anything personal, this is about the city of Guthrie. They're proposing 48 one-bedroom apartments, the exact same type of language, affordable senior housing, the same type of a voucher program that people have to qualify to get into. But if, and, and you'll see where I have it highlighted there, that they're going to put in ample off-street parking. If you look at the next document, that's the actual planned unit proposal that they, that they put in front of the Edmund City Council in April of 2014. On page three, it reiterates 48 units. If you go to page four, and you'll be able to look at the rest of that proposal and see that this is all off-street parking. They're proposing 60 off-street parking spaces for the 48 units. That's more than one parking space per unit because obviously some of these senior one-bedroom apartments are going to be occupied by more than one person. There'll be two people in there. So that asks, that begs the question, where are all these people going to park? And I'll tell you where they're going to park. They're going to park up and down Harrison, up and down Oklahoma, permanently stuck there in front of all the little retail businesses that are already struggling. The small businesses in downtown Guthrie are part of the lifeblood of this city. And to have all those parking spaces taken up by apartment dwellers, again, I don't have anything personal against apartment dwellers, this is just the wrong place to put 34 low-income senior housing units. It's going to be an issue, and we're not going to find out it's an issue until it's too late. That's, that's my biggest beef with it, is where are they all going to park? They're going to take up all the units in downtown. I also have a problem with, take, this, this building, this is like, I'm so proud to live next door to that building. It is gorgeous. It's like the lifeblood of Guthrie. And it needs to be preserved for something better than 34 apartment units. I, I think it's a crime against downtown Guthrie to turn that building into 34 apartment units. We can do better than that. There are discussions underway, there's other things that can be done with that. First and foremost, it needs to be a museum, more than anything else. And I understand the plans call for a micro-museum on the first floor. I don't know what a micro-museum is. I don't know if that's five foot by five foot with one piece of equipment, 10 foot by 10 foot. I haven't seen the plans. But micro-museum as an afterthought for that building isn't what that building ought to be. There's equipment in there, I don't know what's going to happen to the equipment. I know there's been a really sad history in Guthrie with, with the, the old Masonic Children's Home and what happened to that. Thank God, a family stepped up and bought that and turned that into a real showpiece. This place ought to stay a showpiece, and it's not going to stay a showpiece if it's 34 apartment units, low-income apartment units. I, I have no idea if anybody's actually studied to find out how many apartment units are currently available in the Guthrie metropolitan area for low-income senior housing. And of those, how occupied are they? What's the occupancy rate of those? And is there a waiting list for people to get in there? In other words, do we really even have a need for low-income housing? Or is this something where we're jumping on a federal bandwagon because there's tax credits and federal dollars available to do this that, by golly, we need to get some tax credits and some federal money and get it in here? Well, I think when you jump in beds with the feds, sometimes that doesn't work out very well either, and I think we all know that. And I know, we don't call this Section 8 housing anymore. It's got new names. And the reason it's got new names is Section 8 has been a disaster for a couple of decades now. And everybody knows it's a disaster, so they put all the voucher programs under a different name. That's still what it is. And it's going to bring with it all the same problems that it's brought to the Section 8 programs over the last few decades. We don't call it that because it's not politically correct anymore. And again, I don't have anything against somebody that needs some assistance in, in low-income housing before we even go looking to put low-income housing in. Let's make sure there's a need to do it, and not just because there's federal dollars that might be available. And then the last thing is, and again, I, I want to reiterate, I don't have anything personal against anybody at, at Bywater Development. But I did some research on their website. There are five other projects around the country. I can't find where one of them has, and every one of them is contingent on getting federal tax credits and federal funds. I can't see that one of them's actually been approved. So we don't have any guarantee. They're actually going to get approved for federal tax credits and federal funds sufficient to fund this project. The other five, they don't look like they've been off the ground. Now, if they have, it's been something fairly recent. I, I know I did find where they'd applied in Kentucky in the last round, and, in Louisville area. They were turned down on that and said, well, we're going to apply again in 2016. I don't know what the outcome of that is. But the point of all that isn't that there's been, I don't even want to call them failures. I know they're still on the table and they're still hoping to make it happen, but we don't have any guarantee that's going to happen. And all that's going to do is tie this up for another period of years before we get there. I'm sure I've already gone over my five minutes. I'd be glad to go more. I appreciate your indulgence, but I'm urging you not to approve this as 34 affordable senior housing units.
And to the planning commission, I just want to address that that was someone who signed up for public comment. Unfortunately, just due to Open Meetings Act regulations, we can't go back and forth with the commenter. You can address the applicant themselves later on. They are present tonight. And just thank you, Mr. Billido, for your time.
Yes, thank you for coming.
You have a second signee for public comment, and Mr. Dan Lad. And Mr. Lad's joining us at the podium.
Welcome, Mr. Lad.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate you taking a few minutes to hear my point of view, and that is, I'm, I agree with Lynn completely. I'm, I'm opposed to us having a high-capacity apartment building in that Publishing Museum where there's many more applications that could go in there. I'm concerned about the tax revenue. We're not going to collect nearly the tax that we could get if we had a, a business in there. And the parking spaces, as Lynn very eloquently mentioned, it's, it's not sufficient, you're, the parking that's in that lot is going to be completely gone, and they will be taking the, the parking from the businesses that are already there, which makes it harder for people to shop, so people shop less. And we collect, thank you so much. So we collect fewer tax revenues, and we've got to be considering what, what is best for the city. And I really don't feel like this is the best use of that property for the city or for that building in particular. Thank you very much for your time. And I, I guess as Cody pointed out, we can't make comments, but I'm sure some salesmen are going to be here to sell something to you today. And I'd sure love a chance to give a rebuttal to their sales pitch if you have a chance to ask a question of me. I'd be glad to answer that.
And Chairman, that'll be your decision.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lad.
Okay.
Anyone else?
We do not have any other signed up for public comment. I do want to address that the applicant is here. Several members representing their team are, are present tonight. And so I, I think that right now it's best that we just open it up to questions from the planning commission to the applicant, maybe even give the applicant a little bit of time to explain their, their visitation tonight, so.
Who would like to speak?
Mr. Mosley, as he's coming up, I noticed you sent out 46 letters. Were any other, any other letters received back by anybody?
We did not get, we did not receive any other commentary from this.
Thank you.
Good evening. What I am here for, my name is Sherry Mueller. I'm a local real estate lawyer, and I've been hired by Bywater Development LLC on this particular project. What we're asking for tonight is a special use permit for, not 34 units, actually, it's 32 units, to be allowed to be built or constructed into the Oklahoma Publishing Museum. This is a one-step part of a huge project that we're working on. My clients have not received the building, they have not been transferred the building at this time. This is just one step that, a requirement that has been made for them, that they have to have this approval, of course, before they could even be considered at purchasing the museum. I, I am their biggest fan and biggest cheerleader after getting to know them and seeing their proposals and such, and as a local business owner as well. But I don't want to waste their time. The CEO is here present, Mr. David Dodson, and he is from Bywater Development LLC. He's flown in all the way from St. Louis to be here tonight because it's very important for him to be able to explain to you folks personally what his project is, what his mission is, and what their company is all about. I would like to give you, before I do let you have the floor, Mr. Dodson, a flyer on their project. May I approach, please?
Yes.
And for our audience today, you'll, you'll see that I turned around one of the microphones. If you want to go over a handout or something like that with the planning commission, but you don't want to necessarily leave their side, I just ask that you use the microphone. We are being filmed tonight as a part of our regular schedule, so just use the microphone if you're working close with the commissioners. Before we turn it over, I want to address, Ordinance 3279 was crafted earlier in 2016 to address parking concerns with multifamily units in downtown. That was the intent of this, to just, we understand that Guthrie is really seeing a lot of momentum right now. We want to make sure that we are addressing issues like parking and kind of sustainability practices as far as who is in front of our businesses, parking and everything like that as kind of a matter moving forward. So that's why you're seeing this application here tonight. I, as staff representation, I want to ask the Bywater team three separate questions in response to our first public comment tonight, and that was just giving them the opportunity to address the Edmund application regarding parking. Do you want to address the need? I know, as just the city planner role, working with the Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority, that a lot of times you have to do a needs assessment, and so I just want to see if that has been completed, what the results of that were. And then do you want to address the other approvals that were mentioned as either pending or have they had success as of late? So I just want to, as staff, I'd like to hear that.
Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to respond to issues that were raised, and I'm David Dodson.
Excuse me, are you Mr. Dodson?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm David Dodson.
Okay, I just need your name.
David Dodson with Bywater Development Group, and I am the CEO. I'm also the janitor. So we're a small organization, we've done a lot of work. We've got about 50 years of combined experience between my partner and myself. My colleague Heather Law is here with me, and our local partner Buddy Morgan from WRGM Ventures, who's a lifelong Oklahoma City resident and businessperson, is also here. I heard with interest Mr. Billido's comments, and, you know, we're accustomed to, you know, hearing of people's concerns anytime we do anything anywhere. And most of our work is done in other people's communities, so we know that there are people who are going to start out with a little bit, we, we need to prove ourselves early on, and we're intent on doing that. We've, we've come to love this building, we've come to love downtown Guthrie, we've met with community members on a couple of occasions, we're trying to learn more, we've been in touch with the people at the Territorial Museum, we've been in touch with people at the state that own the property, and we believe that what we're proposing is, not only is there a need, which is supported by the professional market study that we're having conducted personally right now, our firm is, and also the State of Oklahoma Housing Needs Study that was just completed in the last handful of months, that is done on a county-by-county basis. And as you all know, and as I know, because I feel it every day that I get older, you know, the, the American population, every community is growing in senior population every year. And then, you know, by 2050, it's going to double the percentage that it is now, according to some statistics I read recently. So there's an increasing demand and an increasing need for senior housing. And we're, you know, I think Mr. Billido has done some good homework, and I think some of his homework isn't exactly apropos or germane to what we're talking about. And part of the implication was that we're sort of handmaidens of the federal government or something. We're in the people, housing people, caring-for-people business, and the tools to do that are often, and in our case, we're expert at these tools, so that's, that's why you'll see that most of our projects do contain contingencies for tax credits and other kinds of financing. But my grandparents were on social security, both of them are now deceased, but they lived in a little house in southwest Missouri that, you know, my father and uncle and I put their first bathroom in when I was in high school. So I understand what it comes, is like to come from, you know, humble upbringing and not having all the comforts. But even today, people who have worked their entire lives and are now ready to retire, and maybe can't take care of a home they own any longer, or maybe their spouse is now deceased, and they want to have a life, they want to have a convenient place to live, they want to participate in the life of a community, and they want to have a comfortable and expensive place to live. And those are the people we're hoping to serve with our plan for the State Capitol Publishing Company building. So we make no apologies for doing housing that's for affordable, affordable to seniors that are on fixed incomes. And I think everybody in this room knows somebody that could benefit from that, maybe in your own family. I know I do. Related to the parking issue, I'm not sure that mentioning anything that goes on in another community is germane. I mean, we could talk about what's happening in Louisville or Lubbock, Texas, or anyplace else we're working, but I think the, the real message needs to be that wherever we're working, we try to understand what the local ordinances are, the local needs, local expectations, and we try to make our projects fit with those needs and standards and ordinances. We know, I mean, I'll submit right now that we know that the present parking scenario is not adequate for adding, you know, 32 new, new units of residential housing in the downtown area. So we're in negotiations right now with another property owner to purchase a portion of the site to add, excuse me, to add parking that's adjacent to the property. So we know we have to solve that problem. And we wouldn't want, I wouldn't want my grandmother to have lived in a place where she and my grandfather couldn't park their car, they had to walk, you know, four blocks to do that. So, I mean, that's just common sense, and we know that. And we know we're not going to get a special use permit approved ultimately without addressing that issue in a satisfactory manner. So the reference to Section 8, and Mr. Billido, I, I take no offense to that, but I know that that's a hot-button word that people like to use. This program has nothing whatsoever to do with Section 8. It's not a new term for an old program. Section 8 is where you're taken care of by the government, your rent is paid for. This, this program is designed to keep, through the tax credits, we're able to keep the loans on our property lower than otherwise would be the case, so where we, we can rent them for less. But the residents of the housing have to have the means to pay their rent, they don't get subsidized. We just get to keep the rent a little bit lower than we would have to under a market scenario because we don't have to borrow as much market rate financing to, to do the project. I do want to say about the building, and I know why people love the building, it's a fantastic building, and we've, you know, fallen in love with it, and if we're allowed to move forward, I, you have our word of honor that we're going to try to be the stewards of the best use that we can possibly make happen for that building. The truth of the matter is, the building is in pretty desperate condition in many ways. It's going to cost a fortune to make it viable for any use. But for some of these special financing kinds of incentives that we're able to access through the Affordable Housing Programs, the $6 million of rehabilitation that we're going to put in this building could not be supported by a, a local restaurant or a, you know, a, a retail establishment on the first floor, and then what happens to the upper floors and the lower floors? I mean, our plan is a complete historic rehabilitation of the building, top to bottom, inside and out, new elevator, new fire suppression sprinkler systems, you know, historic preservation of all the historic details in conformity with not only the city of Guthrie's historic preservation ordinance, but with the state and federal government standards for rehabilitation under the historic tax credit program. So there's going to be lots of elements of fail-safe to make sure that building is restored The square footage of the building comfortably allows for 32 senior apartments with lots of common space and gathering space and community space and services and activity space, and a small, admittedly, the building, we, we're not in the museum business, but we understand the importance of that building and the history of the city of Guthrie and the history of the printing industry and the newspaper industry, going back to the first State Capitol Day. So we believe it's important to do everything we can to preserve some of that equipment and some of the accoutrement that come along within the furniture and the fixtures that are there, and create a tribute to the history of the State Capitol Museum, or State Capitol Printing Company. The days of it being a museum, by all accounts, from what we've heard, are over. I mean, the, the state's not funding it. Funding isn't there for it to happen. So we, we believe that we provide a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to truly preserve this building for the next century. It's not some kind of paint-up fix-up. It's a full rehabilitation, all new systems, all new HVAC, all new roof, all restored windows, new entry features, I mean, everything that you would want if you could put your wish list together for that building. And, and I believe Mr. Billido is going to really appreciate living next door to that building. And we, by the way, we really like his building, too. It's really fantastic. 10 years from now, you're not going to like living next door to that building if something can't be done, because it's not going to be in good shape for long enough to, to sit, you know, to be a, a good neighbor any longer. It's going to start having problems. So intervention time is now. As you know, the museum had to close because the monies weren't there just to even repair the, the old boiler, which is going to be, you know, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So just to have a basic level of operational life is going to require a lot of money, and we have a plan that can do that. Related to our experience, I've, I've been in the housing business for about 40, almost 40 years, and my partner for about 16, 17 years. Buddy and Heather, my colleagues here, have been involved for years, and we've done over, either as our company or in previous endeavors that we've been involved in, done historic rehabilitation on over 60 buildings. Bywater is a fairly new company, that's why our portfolio isn't huge, but we do, the project that you mentioned in Louisville was approved. We're working on that one right now. It's an old-school building in the city of Louisville that takes up an entire city block. It's a big, huge deal to the city, they love it. It's bringing back a neighborhood that's suffering because of that abandoned Hulk sitting there, much like the State Capitol Publishing Building will be to that community, to your community, you know, if it continues on for another 10, 15 years without some intervention. We have another project, housing development for seniors in St. Louis County that we're doing right now that's under construction, 94 units. We have a number of things going on. We're consultants for a number of other entities that are doing housing, we're consultants for governmental entities in southern Illinois. So, yeah, as a new, we are a newer company, we've been, we opened up about three years ago. We're on a good track, we're having successes. We have, what we do have, that you're not going to see, and I don't talk bad about any developers, because there are great, great developers out there working everywhere, but what I don't honestly believe you're going to find from another developer is, number one, the, the roll up your sleeves and work at stuff that we apply to what we do, and number two is sort of the genuine understanding that we're a guest in the communities we work in, and we're here for a purpose, and to do something good that isn't just lining our pocket. And, and, you know, don't get me wrong, we have to earn a living at this, and I'm not ashamed of that, but we'll do, and everything we do, all we're able to do to keep benefits, the economic benefits of affordable housing development within the community. We work with local professionals when it comes to, we have a construction manager that works with us, but they will bid all the work of the construction and rehabilitation and material supply to local subcontractors and suppliers. You're not going to see a line of pickup trucks driving in on the, after, on Monday mornings from St. Louis or anywhere else. That work is going to stay here in the community. And at the end of the day, part of what downtowns all over the country need is more vibrancy, vitality, people, street life. You've got a lot of that here. The State Capitol Publishing Building right now, though, is kind of ground zero for what's beginning to look like, if, if unchecked, you know, a trend of decline that you don't want to have happen. you don't want to have happen, and introducing people, human beings, active seniors, they're not, you know, going to the nursing home. I just turned sixty-two a couple of weeks ago, so I now qualify for senior housing. I hope I can still get out and shake it a little bit, you know, just like all the rest of us can. City of Kansas City, which is just as germane to talk about as Edmund, is actively seeking to bring in seniors into their downtown areas because they see seniors as a stabilizing influence. They see seniors as having retired, active seniors as participating in the commercial activity and the arts and the entertainment activities in their downtown areas in ways that they want to encourage. So, they've got special programs going on as we speak to try to bring seniors into their downtown. Kansas City's very different than Guthrie, but the principle's pretty similar. I mean, folks like that are going to add to the vitality of the community. They're going to contribute in some small way to the economic robustness of what's going on downtown. They're going to be a stabilizing influence. They're going to be people who've worked hard all their lives and are now retiring to a comfortable place where they can enjoy the surroundings of a beautiful renovated historic building. And I believe everybody here is going to be happy they're there when that occurs. So, for that reason, I ask this commission to please allow us, as Sherry mentioned, help us get beyond this first step. This isn't a final approval of anything, but please consider what we're trying to do. Recommend to the council the approval of the special use permit, and let us then, with that in hand, we can make application for all the financing from the Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority and others that we need to do to make this project a reality. We're excited about the building. We love it. We're falling in love with the town of Guthrie, and thank you for the welcome we've received in all quarters, and also really respectfully receive the comments and the, any criticisms that are kind of legitimately out there for people that own their properties and care about those things. So, we're not offended by that at all. Appreciate being able to respond to those comments.
Mr. Dodson, I have a question for you. With the Logan County Hospital Project being successfully funded, is this going to have a negative impact on your deal?
Well, we don't believe so, based on the statistics we've seen, and we were aware of that. We've asked our market analysts to specifically address the market of and the need for affordable senior housing in Guthrie as the primary market and Logan County as the secondary market, including an assumption that those apartments are built in full. And our preliminary, we haven't got the final market study in hand yet, but our preliminary information is that there's even more need than that in the marketplace, so.
When are you scheduled to meet with OHA?
We have an application due to them at the end of the month, so June thirtieth is, we've met with them about this project a couple of times, and I think they like the concept an awful lot. But still, we're competing for those resources with others from all across the state and projects all across the state. We think the fact that there's more than one senior housing application that's in right now is really kind of a demonstration what we're saying here, that, you know, we all know, and those of us in this business know not to try to build a project where there's not a market for it. And so, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Sorry, I just want to, I just want to interrupt. Are you saying that you're going to be, OFA's going to rule on your application at the end of this month?
No, no, that's when our, that's when our application is due to be submitted. That's the application deadline.
And so, when will?
Their decisions will be made, I believe, in the November board meeting.
November.
So, there's still a long process to go. We're just trying to get past the starting blocks.
I want to clarify something. We have a letter as part of a requirement from OFA, and it actually, the wording on this, and so I just want to clarify something. You're describing the project in this tone, and it says, "And no more than thirty-four one-bedroom." And so, are we, are we really taking advantage of the "and no more" and saying it's actually going to be thirty-two? Is thirty-two set in stone?
Yeah, we're happy to set it in stone. Now, our initial use, space use plan by our architect, which is Blackledge and Associates from Oklahoma City, was that they could get forty-two, or thirty-four units in the building. We've had our historic consultant take a look, and there, as you guys know, there's some magnificent, you know, interior things that need to be preserved that are going to, you know, take a footprint out of the first floor in particular, like that beautiful carved wood cage, you know, like, it's like, almost like a bank teller's cage. I'm sure you've all seen that. So, after going through all the space use again, and setting aside this proper square footage to be able to preserve those historic elements and do the other things we want to do in common areas, and also to add another safety feature of an additional fire corridor in the rear of the building, so there's like remote areas for people to safely leave the building in the event of a fire. We're now at thirty-two units, and that's the final.
And I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot. It's just kind of with, with that, it changes our rules, commissioners, just to give you a heads up. Our rule is one and a half parking spots per multifamily unit. Doesn't matter if it's downtown, outside of downtown, no matter what. It's one and a half per multifamily. And so, if they're at thirty-two, we're expecting a total of forty-eight. Obviously, you addressed that there's a shortage anyways. I do want to clarify one thing, though. You said that there's, in that same document that I mentioned earlier, there is a community room, micro-museum. Do you know what square footage is going to be associated with the non-appartments?
Well, on the first floor, there's going to be about twenty-seven hundred square feet from what we can tell right now. And that's, you know, that's, allow me to, once we see that, we don't even have the plans in our hand yet. They've been, now that they've been revised, we've just been speaking with the architect by phone the last couple of days. But it looked like about twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred square feet of community space. It includes sort of public space and...
And for our commissioners, again, on that kind of retail common space, we actually do identify public spaces in here. It's also one spot per one-hundred-and-fifty square foot. And so, just a quick math, not a, not an accountant by any means, that would be another eighteen additional spaces on top of the forty-eight required, bringing it...
Yeah, I think we probably want to look at that with you as we go forward and understand exactly what the code requires, because that's really not use space. It's actually community space for the residents of the development. So, it's not going to be a commercial establishment that would require extra parking or anything like that.
Cody, does that, parking have to be on-site?
Yes.
Not street parking?
Right. They cannot, they cannot count any kind of publicly-owned parking as a part of their development for this.
Right.
And I would ask Mr. Dodson some questions about that, because I'm sure you've done preliminary. We're looking at your plans here. Currently, there's fifteen existing, five on Second Street that you're showing, six on Harrison, which is currently all trolley stops, so I have to be throwing them out. And then I assume you're looking at the back here into the AT&T Southwestern Bell area. You're looking to go into there and bring in twenty-eight spots. Obviously, I'm assuming, again, you've got some very, very serious high overhead electrical that isn't going to disappear. And so, is this something that you've already done some preliminary work with Southwestern Bell?
Yes, there we are.
I mean, is this, is this beyond just a picture for us?
Yes. I hope that we'll have more to show you before the end of the month. We've had, I don't know, probably twenty phone calls and that many more emails back and forth between the Dallas folks of AT&T or Southwestern Bell, who manage the real estate for this region. And we just had last Thursday a call where they confirmed that everything up to last Thursday had been sort of like, okay, we get what you're trying to do. We've got a process here internally we have to undertake. And, you know, Sherry's been in touch with their legal side on a number of...
Well, be that as it may, that brings you up to fifty-four spots, and we've just heard sixty-six. We're still twelve short, and that is utilizing eleven on the street.
Yeah, and I...
Which can't be counted.
Technically, we can't count.
Yeah, I think we know that, we understand that. And that was just something our architect put together to kind of illustrate what kind of parking was available immediately adjacent to the building. We don't, we know we can't include street parking in our account.
Well, that would, that would run us some twenty-three short, and that's a little bit...
Well, I think we're going to want to revisit that sixty-some number, because that's, that's not, as I understand it, in conformity with the use that we're, that we're planning for the twenty-seven hundred square feet. The twenty-seven hundred square feet is like the living room of the development. It's not public use space. It's not leased to anybody else.
So, the micro-museum isn't going to be open to the public?
It'll be, it'll be open on selected by appointment, and it, because it's not, you know, we're not allowed to operate in an affordable housing development like a commercial establishment.
Can I, can I ask you a question, quick question? What is sixty percent or less of the area meridian for Oklahoma City as income? What is that figure? Do you know?
Yeah, I don't have the exact number. The median income for the Oklahoma City metro area, which Logan County is a part of, and this is published every year with changes, but I think it's about, for a household of four, which is how they determine it, is about forty-eight thousand or something like that. For a household of one or two, though, sixty percent of AMI is going to end up being in the low to mid-twenty-thousand-dollar range. So, people on fixed income, social security, even people on some retirement benefits and pensions will qualify for that. The number of household members matters. So, a household of one person is going to be closer to twenty, and a household of two persons is going to be closer to the mid-twenties. And I think I see Heather trying to look up the exact numbers, and I hope I'm stating it fairly correctly. I'm kind of working from memory. We can come back to that as soon as she finds.
No, I was just curious. I was just, I had never looked at it, so I figured you'd know that number. Any other questions, Mr. Dodson?
I guess one of the things I would, just quite a little bit of revisiting that sounds like we need to be doing here, I'm not sure that we have enough information to really make a reliable, well-thought-out decision this evening. I don't know if there's some way that that's going to be tabled or whatever, but I'm not quite sure that with the information you've given us, and very well presented, by the way, that I think that I can make a fair decision on behalf of our community. I don't know, Mr. Mosley, if there's any...
Unfortunately, we've, we've sent out notices, as you see in my staff report, saying that there's going to be a second public hearing on June twenty-first at the next council meeting. And so, I don't, I don't mean this near as badly as what it's going to come out. We didn't put the developer or the applicant on any sort of timeline. And so, it's unfortunate that we don't have as much information as what we probably need to make a decision. But we didn't ask them to turn it in by any certain point, and for us to not have the information, you guys are responsible for making a recommendation to city council for the June twenty-first meeting.
Mr. Chairman... Could I interject? I beg your pardon. I just want you all to be aware of our timelines, because it pertains to the schedule with the city. To be able to make an application to Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority on June thirtieth, we have to have demonstrable information from the city that we have achieved the special use permit. Now, I'm happy to provide anything you need. I don't know what you think that we haven't provided that you would need to make a good decision. I understand the difficulty of making a decision, an affirmative decision, when there are people in the room that have demonstrated that they don't like what we're trying to do. But our plan is good. It's sound. It's based on market. It's based on...
I just want to interject for them. We haven't seen that market. That market hasn't been proven. And so, when you, when you say that you don't know what we haven't, what you haven't addressed, there was a specific question that I asked earlier that was never addressed.
Well, I did address it, but there's nothing...
That you didn't have the information.
No, we have information from the statewide market analysis.
Then I, I think that our commissioners would love to hear that, and I certainly would as staff.
Okay. No, and we can get you that right away as a matter of shared information. I don't see anything in the submittal requirements for the special use permit that we supply market analysis to anybody, but we're happy to do whatever we need to do.
I think whenever you're asking for a special use permit, no, the application might not list every single thing that you need to do to make your case, but I would certainly have, if I were in your shoes, I would have brought that information. And so, I want to defend our commissioners, because I think that when they're saying that they don't have the information, I think they're justified in saying that.
Okay. No, and I agree with you. I'm not trying to be argumentative.
No, 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 certainly not.
I just didn't know we needed...
And I'll, and I'll go on the record of saying I've enjoyed working with this entire group so far.
I guess all I'm throwing myself at the mercy of the commission is, if we're not forwarded on for council action by the end of this month, we don't even have anything to talk about. Now, and that may be okay with you. It's probably okay with some of the folks over here. But we would love for you to agree with us that our plan is solid enough and substantial enough that it's worth giving us the shot. It's worth the opportunity that we can work through all these issues, and that if we, if we get kicked to the curb at the council meeting, I mean, you all have it within you to make that happen if it needs to happen. But if we can respond to your needs and requirements and reasonable requests for anything, and get everybody comfortable with this by the time the council has to make a recommendation of, you know, approving the special use permit or not, which will have another opportunity for public comments and public hearing. We would love for you to see this as one of the last best opportunities to save the State Capitol Publishing Building, because we believe it is.
Mr. Chairman, I'm all in agreement with the needs of this type thing, but not downtown. And for that reason, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the special use permit.
Motion's been made to deny. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. If we have a vote, please.
All in favor to recommend a denial to the city council for application twenty-sixteen dash two thousand and eleven, thirty-six ninety-two. Please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing that recommendation will not be made.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chairman, I'll let you...
Is that set for when?
June twenty-first, seven PM, the same location.
Okay.
Chairman, I'll introduce, I'll let you introduce item six.
Discussing on possible action on amending design guidelines for accessory buildings.
Yeah. In your packets, you'll see a page that looks like a rainbow design. I've highlighted some information on our design guidelines. This is my, I'm sorry, this is the packet that was laid out outside of your agenda earlier this evening. I've highlighted my interpretation of how you wanted us to move forward with the residential design guidelines concerning metal buildings. Everything in blue is going to be, is proposed to be added. What we're seeing is metal exterior materials are not allowed in residential areas. All metal exterior buildings are allowed only in industrial zones. Skipping down, I want to highlight that this one is yellow because we go back and give justification for the previous statement with what's below, and that is properties measuring more than five total acres considered to be rural in use are allowed to do metal exterior buildings. And then the Board of Adjustment shall grant favorable consideration to properties measuring two or more acres. And then the third item that would allow a applicant or homeowner or property owner to construct an all-metal accessory building in a residential use is properties directly adjacent to industrial or agriculturally-zoned areas. Skipping down, you see the severability. The line I highlighted in red, that's just an update that will be made should you want to make recommendations to city council to change up our design guidelines. And so, to give you an idea, blue and yellow are new things that kind of give definition to our workshop discussion, and then the red will actually just reflect a date that it was approved.
Cody, would, would these be allowed in, just say, an agriculture area?
Yes.
If it's owned agriculture?
Yes. And that's a matter of rule as of right now.
But I mean, it would have to be approved through the planning commission?
It would not, actually. In fact, a, an agricultural, these buildings largely are used for farming or bar... In fact, an agricultural, these buildings largely are used for farming or barn equipment, and that as an identified use would be allowed right now in agricultural uses. We only identify design guidelines in our commercial and residential areas. We do not actually have design guidelines for agriculturally-zoned areas.
Okay.
Cody, had we addressed the fact that even where we had five acres and that metal buildings may be used, but the fact that they should still try to complement the residence because that, you know, that can be done in the...
No, I think you're right. No, I don't think that, I don't think that that clause is reflected in this amendment. You can make that adjustment tonight if you'd like, that you would just want to amend saying that the, all of them should complement a residential use.
Since there's two of us missing, that we're at the workshop, can we make sure that they get a copy of this and address this at the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. Or, I mean, I'd be more than happy to bring it back to you at the next meeting with that already in there, if you'd like that.
That'd be good.
Okay. Just, I need to add the fact that it is complimentary. And then we'll get a few more ayes on it at the next meeting and let you have a vote with no amendment from there. Does that work?
That's good.
Okay.
Item seven...
Sorry, I want to, can I get a motion and a second to table?
Make a motion to table and add that little portion that we just discussed.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing done. Motion will be tabled until the July 2016 meeting.
Item seven's request for future items of discussion.
Obviously, the last item will go immediately on there. It'll open it up to other future items.
Staff comments?
All right. None this evening. None this evening.
Commissioner comments? Ms. French?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Ruggen?
You're afraid to ask me, aren't you?
Uh-huh.
No comments.
Go ahead.
None?
All right.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You are adjourned.